While we're waiting for, who else? George and John. Since it is a public meeting, I'm going to read the right to know script and then we'll just get right into it. So tonight, we'll be conducting a school board meeting in South African School Board. Before we get started, I'll read through a checklist to ensure that the meeting that we are holding is in compliance with the right to know law. As Chairperson of the South African School Board, I find that due to the state emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the governor's order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04 and its extensions, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. In accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possible by video and other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the committee and staff have the ability to communicate contemporaneously in this meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously watch and or listen to the meeting on Zoom and via phone by following directions and links provided on our website, www.sau39.org. We have provided public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We're providing a mechanism for the public to alert public body during the meeting. If there are problems with access, if anyone has a problem, please email awallace@SAU39.org. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. And let's start the meeting with a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state where they are. And if anyone else is in the room during the meeting, this is required under the right to know law. So let's call the roll. Steve?
Yes, home alone in my kitchen.
Amy.
I am now home alone.
I don't see John. So Stephanie?
I'm home and I'm alone. You know, John just called me. I'm texting him now to see if he just can't get in or something.
Okay, Laura?
Home and alone.
Okay. So it's very late. I'm sure we are. Kind of go through this. So the whole purpose behind this meeting is solely focused on the proposed resolutions that Laura will be bringing forward to the NHSBA obligation this Saturday and that Amy will also be attending as the first vice president of that organization. So there are, I think, a handful. So let's kind of go through them. Well, I'm not going to read through them. Hoping that all of you have already read through them. And we could just go right into taking a vote whether we support or do not support. And if we find that we need to have discussion, we can certainly open for discussion. So I'm just going to go through, do a similar roll call and you can say whether you support or do not support the particular resolution, proposed resolution. So the first one we'll look at is number seven submitted by the Conville School Board. The resolution is COVID-19 funding. So Steve?
Can I ask a clarifying question, just to make this meeting longer because we don't need enough? So Laura will be voting the South African School Board's position on this. I'm curious, does Amy get a vote as an officer of the organization or does she just have to listen?
I will not. Only one delegate can vote.
Okay, thank you. I would support this.
Okay, Amy?
Support.
John?
No objection.
Okay, Stephanie?
I'll support it.
Laura?
Okay, so this is which number again?
Number seven. It's the one submitted by the Conville School Board. Resolution is titled COVID-19 funding.
I have the Kentuckit Valley School Board. Are we looking at the same one?
Yeah, that's its longer name.
Okay, all right. Okay. The Board of Directors did not recommend. So Amy, can you explain that?
Hold on. Do you want to go on?
You know why they're saying, hey, Amy, yeah, they're saying it's that they're not for because they're focusing on longstanding resolutions and this is a very narrow focused one, you know, like current year only.
Exactly.
Yeah, so we're supporting the Board of Directors' decision.
No.
Oh.
So. Hold on. The way I put, the way I put the ask to our board is, are you in support of this resolution or not in support of the resolution? Not do you support what the Board of Directors is recommending?
Gotcha. Okay.
Gotcha.
I thought we were making our recommendation based on the Board of Directors.
You can make whatever recommendation you want to if that's what you use for basis. As a matter of fact, I hadn't voted yet and I was going to vote not in support for that reason.
Can I ask a question too before we vote?
Sure. We've already started, but go ahead.
I know. Adam, what do you know? So I understand now that we have a new president, he's signing all these executive orders and one of them he signed has to do with schools being given access to FEMA funds. Does that mean we're potentially going to see more? And or you know anything about it? Or is it way too early in the process?
So I know, this is what I know. There was a first round of funding that we got a little bit because it was based on free reduced lunch. There was a second COVID relief built to federal level where we're getting a lot more. It's yet to be distributed yet. And now there's also access to the FEMA funds, which originally were available to us, but then taken away controversially, I might add. And so now we expect that funding as well.
Okay.
Frankly, while it's all got to wash out and play out, I think we're going to more than cover our COVID-related expenses for this current year. That's a guesstimate at this point.
Okay.
All right, so I didn't look. This, Danae's not on this call, is she?
No.
No. Okay, so Stephanie, as a secretary, you're, are you taking?
Taking notes. I'm taking notes. Hold on, I will be taking notes.
Okay. That's why I'm saying it now instead of at the end. No, no, it's okay.
Okay.
Because I just.
Yeah, do we, go ahead, Steve. I was going to ask something, but go ahead.
Go ahead, yes, Steve.
Well, thank you, Madam Ex-Chairman, for recognizing me. So I just wanted to state my assumption about what's going to happen here is, as far as I know, the results of this delicate assembly vote in the end informs how the School Board Association lobbies in Concord. It has really no other impact. So it's really, it's just going to force what Barrett says in education committee meetings, more or less, is I think how it goes. So if we want him to be pushing for more money over and above the FEMA money, then we should vote yes.
Yes, in support of it.
In support of it, yes.
Okay. So do we, do I want to go back now that we've clarified the rules? Can we, should we go back and re-vote? Does anybody want to re-vote?
Yeah, let's go back and do a redo, I'd say.
Okay. So now we're talking about the resolution, not what the Board of Directors recommend. So for the resolution, Steve Kaufman?
Still support.
Okay, Amy?
No.
Okay, John?
No objection.
So you're in support then?
Yes, sorry. Awkward prediction.
Stephanie?
Ah, yes.
Laura?
Can I ask Amy? Are you more inclined to support it because of the Board of Directors? Or is there, is that, is their desire to have short-term or long-term resolutions more important? Or how does that weigh into your decision?
Well, I voted already to not support, so because I'm on the Board of Directors. But I guess the rationale is there for you to to make your own conclusions.
I'll let Pam.
Well, I'm voting not in support for the main reasons that the Board of Directors stated that it is too narrow. I think it should be something that's longer standing.
So if I don't know, we have a tie. What do we do then? And if I don't vote, if I abstain, we have a yes.
You can do whatever you want, but that when you, when you go to, well, you know, going anywhere, but when you participate in the meeting, you can just say that, you know, the Board would split on this particular one. It's, we're not going to be the only ones voting for this, so I'm sure there's going to be a majority one way or the other.
To be clear though, on Laura's question, a motion to pass has to have a majority. If it doesn't get a majority, then the motion fails.
Yeah, but we're not making a motion to pass.
Okay, we're taking a straw poll.
Yeah, yeah. So which is what Laura is going to submit on Saturday. Our board decided this vote on this resolution. Or you don't have to say what the vote is, but you know, either it's a support or not the support. And if in the case of this, you can say that we abstained from voting for this particular one because we were split. It's up to you. Vote however you like.
Laura, vote how you want you want, and I can get clarification on Barrett as to how it works if our board has a tie on this. Because typically you just hold, you know, if you're voting in favor of something on behalf of your board, then you hold up a colored index card, so I can get clarification for you. But I would say vote how you think you want to vote.
Um, fine, I'll vote no, so we'll have a tie.
Okay, great, thanks. Let's move on to number eight, which is resolutions titled Last Mile Broadband. So we'll go right to the vote. Steve?
Support.
Amy?
Support.
John?
Or?
Stephanie?
Support.
Laura?
I support it.
And I support it as well. So that one, we clearly support, so that's great. Okay, let's move on. Oh, this one doesn't not have a name. Number nine submitted by the Raymond School Board. I'll just read the resolution since it doesn't have a title. To amend continuing resolution number six to read NHSBA supports reinstituting full school building aid funding to state funded levels greater than state appropriations prior to the 2011 school building aid moratorium. So everyone's read that. It's, I probably actually just basically read almost the whole dang thing. So to be short, so we get right to voting. So Steve?
Yes, support.
Amy?
Support.
John?
Support.
Stephanie?
Support.
Laura?
Support.
Yeah, I support that. All right. Number 10, also an unnamed resolution submitted by the Madenock School Board. NHSBA supports school districts that promote equity-based inclusive education, et cetera, et cetera. Everybody should have had the opportunity to read it again. So we'll go right to the vote. Steve?
I emphatically support the Madenock Resolution as opposed to the proposed rewording. I much prefer their wording.
Okay, that's good to know. Amy?
I support the alternative language.
Okay.
Hold on.
Okay.
John?
Will you discuss this one at all?
Well, yeah, what, what, could you elaborate, Amy?
Um, really?
Well, I mean, what alternative language? I mean.
It's at, it's.
It's at the bottom of that.
It's at the bottom.
All right, right, okay.
I'll say why I was emphatic, which is the resolution is proactive and the alternative language is we'll follow the law, whatever.
Right, but the resolution will require students to have a general educational classroom setting, which, and the other one is satisfies the law of maybe more specifically meeting their needs.
Does that sound like an unfunded mandate? Or is that just me?
The resolution?
Yeah. I mean, this is the thing about, you know, there's lawsuits about adequacy in education. Like it's all sort of subjective term.
Yeah, the alternative language is really to align itself to adherence to law, to the law.
And the proposed language is to make the law better, in my mind.
I'll support the alternative resolution.
Okay. John?
I'll support the alternative resolution because we can always do more if we have taxpayer support. But I'm, unfunded mandates are difficult for me.
Sure. Stephanie?
I support the alternative language.
Yeah. And I see what Steve's rationale is and I understand and agree with it. But I do support the alternative language as well. So majority supports the alternative language. That's the message going to the delegation. Now, for some reason, they stopped titling these. So number 11 by the Madenock School Board. Resolution, New Hampshire School Board Association supports the concept that the state of New Hampshire should define the calculation of interim district charges when students are tuitioned to an alternate district. So they have a rationale as well as the Board of Directors' recommendation on one page. So we'll start with Steve.
Not support.
Amy?
Not support.
John?
Not support.
Stephanie?
Do not support.
Laura?
Not support.
And I do not support it either. So let's be unanimous.
I just see a horrible cost per pupil calculation happening.
Yeah. It must benefit Madenock and that's probably about it.
Yeah.
Anyway. The next one, number 12 submitted by Oyster River School Board. Resolution at NHSBA values and respect students and staff privacy. New Hampshire state law should enable school to require students who attend classes remotely participate through video and enabling technologies provided. Schools should also provide tools to protect the privacy of the location and other people in the environment while students are moving. It's kind of also a tough one. But we'll get right into the vote. So Steve?
Oh, sorry, I've checked my notes. Not support.
Amy?
Support.
John?
Not support.
Stephanie?
Do not support.
Laura?
I do not support.
I understand where they're coming from, but I also do not support it. So. So unanimous in that. Number 13 submitted by Nottingham School Board. I am School Board opposes changes to IDA allocation calculations resulting in funds being dispersed directly to the school district which the child is registered in towns which do not have high schools and not to the students' residence. Nottingham School Board calls for immediate return of prior method of calculations for year federal and state funds as well as maintaining this commitment in the future to keep any and all funds distributed to the staffs, staff, sorry, to the students' town residents. So here's a question for Amy. Since this one, I think there's at least one other one after this, if not two, that were submitted after the response date. Is this, will this be heard and be considered? Or is this one of those things where it's going to be like, it depends on how we feel and depends on the time of day and that kind of thing?
So it will be put to the delegates whether they wish to consider the late submission. So it just means that the delegation could say, no, we don't want to discuss this, or they could say, yes, we do want to.
Okay.
But if they do discuss it, should we have a
Yes.
ready?
Yeah.
Yeah, we definitely should.
Yeah, I would agree. All right, so I'll start the voting with Steve.
I'm going to abstain. My theory being, I'm going to trust Laura to listen to whatever is said and make the right decision.
Okay, Amy?
Yeah, I like that.
No guidelines for you, Laura. Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think it's good. And, you know, the benefit is you'll have two of us there to listen as well and we can communicate. But I think that's a good approach. Um, it looks like it would be something I would support, but I like the idea of hearing the full, the full conversation.
Yeah, yeah, because I mean, I can see where it's like, you know, you have a Mont Vernon student at Sohigan High School and does Mont Vernon get the, but they don't have a high school. So I don't, you know, it's not a good example of it, but that's where the issue is, right?
Yeah.
Where the money goes.
Yeah.
They do have a high school.
Yeah, it's more analogous to Mount Vernon at AMS.
Yes, yeah. So yeah, you have a seventh grader. Is the money, does the money go to Mount Vernon? Or does it go to the Emmer School District that pays for it?
Yeah.
So I mean, I'm tempted to say it needs to go to the school where the student goes to school, not the place of residence.
Yeah, that's, that's what's costing, right?
Right.
So.
Yes.
That's where the funds should go. So I'm trying to understand the way this is worded. Opposes changes that would result in funds being dispersed directly. So there, if I was not in support, then I would.
Yeah, so they want.
If I want the school, the funds to go directly to the school, then I would not be in support of this. Is that correct?
How I read it.
Opposes the changes in IDA. So they oppose the change where it's going to be going to the district.
Yeah.
Which the town is registered and not to the students' residence.
So they actually wanted to go to their place, their place, their town of residence.
Yes, yes. That's how I.
Yeah.
So I guess this is a good one for Laura. So depending on, maybe, maybe we ought to vote then, we should vote, do we want the money to go, the funds to go to the school or the funds to go to the town, the students' residence? So if you vote those two things, then depending on how the discussion goes and the clarification, then you can provide our input from that.
Hey, Pam, point of order. Adam just sent a note. He's asking, do we need him? He's got some other issue he has to deal with. So can we cut him loose?
Yeah, I don't think we need him.
Who's the host of this?
I think he is, but hopefully he doesn't cut us off.
Hopefully he can, maybe he can transfer host duties to you and get about his, get about his business.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I would, I would not support this, just based on this reading.
Meaning that you want the funds to go to the.
The school district.
I want to go to the school district that is paying for the education of the kid.
Yeah.
Where the costs reside. Yeah.
Yeah.
How about you, John?
Yeah, agreed.
Steve?
Money should go to the school district where the students are. And it's up to the local districts to sort out whether they have tuition agreements or whatever. That's a local issue.
Yeah. Steve?
I would agree. It should go to the school district that's educating the child, not to the residents.
And Laura, you have a differing opinion or same?
I agree.
Okay.
No, if this is voted on, it votes no.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So I would imagine there's going to be discussion around, if you guys decide to have discussion, that the discussion would be around some clarification. And if it's, if it is what we think it is, then you know our answer.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome.
Perfect.
Thank you for that. That was actually a good discussion there. All right. Number 14 submitted by Manchester Board of School Committee. They just.
Yes.
Thing.
Yeah.
This is actually a big deal. If I remember talking to John and to Mark, because as we're, as everybody's getting free meals, people are not filling out the paperwork required, which then causes a problem next year.
Yeah.
So we want to support this.
Well, I think it's, is it because of all the COVID situation, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Up there.
Families aren't filling out the paperwork because they don't need to. Well, they need to, but.
Yeah, they're not. Yeah. So it's screwing up the numbers going forward, in essence, right?
So, yes.
And there's three parts to this resolution.
Yeah, so they want to be held harmless for differentiating. Yeah.
Yeah, so I think, well, I'll save my comments at the end. So I would just go around real quick. Steve?
Yeah, if this comes up, I would support it. And if it doesn't come up, well, I would ask Laura to vote for it to come up.
There you go. Good. Amy?
Yeah, I would agree and support.
Okay, John?
Same.
Stephanie?
Yes, I support this.
Laura?
I support it, but it's unclear if it's possible because it's a federal program. Isn't that a federal program rather than a state program?
Uh, Title I is a federal program, but the, how, but the New Hampshire DOE helps to parse out the funds and I think they can.
Administered through.
Yeah, so they can say. Yeah, so they can say how it's going to get administered, so they'd like to administer it based, they're asking about the 2019, 20 year versus the 2021 year.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem, and I would support it also. So that's unanimous for most on that one, if it comes up, and hopefully it will. So that was it.
Awesome.
Yeah, so other than we're about to take a motion, the only other thing I'm gonna say is, and I sent out an email. About the last year's presentation for the deliberative. So please go through those, please edit your heart out, your hearts away, whatever you wanna call it. And, you know, let's make this as, as good of a, a presentation as we can. I think there's gonna be, even though we're gonna talk about it on Monday, in that, in that particular. Whatever it's been edited to at that point, that addition, I should say, or revision at that point. I'm sure there'll be additional revisions throughout the week. But I don't wanna wait until the end of the week, or next week, to do them all, and then we're like rushing around on the weekend, trying to make sure we got all our ducks in row. Inevitably, we'll have some of that happening anyway, so let's, uh, let's try to minimize that if, if at all possible. I know I have a lot of work to do, so, and I will say, you don't have to answer me right now. But I will reiterate that if there is somebody who has a burning need to get up and speak on a few slides, let me know, and we'll, we'll put you into a spot somewhere. Okay?
If, yeah, if not, Pam, because I did the presentation on all the different categories. I'm just gonna go ahead and assume I'm doing that section.
Yeah, yeah.
Unless someone else wants.
Yeah, exactly, I would start, at least, I mean, there's enough slides there, where, you know, that still require work. And by the way, despite what we heard earlier, I'm not gonna say it, because this is a public meeting, I'm not gonna say it out loud, but. The personnel matter that we heard earlier, we do have that support. So feel free to reach out if you need additional information on any of those slides, but. Continue as if, and if we needed to, you know, divvy up, we'll divvy up something, something where it makes sense, obviously.
So Pam, should I assume that I'm taking those Warren articles?
Yeah, I would say that's a great assumption.
Okay, so I will make some edits to, to those as needed. I know that I did wanna get some additional clarification on, on a few things, so I'll work on that.
Yeah, and, you know, our last, our public meeting slides were about what, 20 or so? This one is gonna be closer in the neighborhood of, you know, north, north of 50, probably closer to, to over 60 to 70. So there's gonna be more discussion, there is gonna be more opportunities if there is somebody else who wants to have some fun. So, as it were, anyhow.
Someone else can take the tax discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I, I will, I will volunteer, more or less, to start it off and to end it. And then we'll figure out how many slides it is on either end, as part of that, so.
Amy, I was going to ask, does the change in the vote of the Amherst School Board change anything on our Warren articles?
No, it does not.
Yeah, that's, uh, it doesn't, now, it could affect our thought process for our Warren article that we pushed off from this year to next year. Right, about the science classrooms, because now we could be competing against the huge Warren article from ASD.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, anyway, we'll, we'll cross that bridge.
Exactly, we'll put our story together and figure out with J.Fact the right way to move forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, so, all right, so with that, I will take the final motion.
A motion to adjourn.
Thank you, a second, second by John, all right, so do a quick roll call, Steve?
Yes.
Amy?
ACS.
John?
Lover, yes.
Steph?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And yes from me, all right, we are adjourned, thank y'all very much, and.
Thanks, everyone.
Have a fabulous weekend, enjoy your, your, geez, what are we doing?
Our delegate assembly.
Yes, yes, your delegate assembly over the weekend.
Thrilling.
I'll be watching, no, I won't, so.
Right, yeah, you'll be working on the presentation for the deliberative.
There you go, we'll go with that, all right, bye, everybody.
Bye, everyone.